Maintain it as is. It will be a parking lot. It will be for Skagit County employees. Nothing changes during this particular property option time. Then the city has the right to exercise the option, which would be a property purchase, a purchase and sale agreement. And that it would be for the property that includes 29,350 square feet for a price of $352,000. The agreement also corrects a right-of-way issue that we identified in exploring all the documents around the property, where legally, basically Third Street runs right through it. And when the alignment happened, the documents weren't corrected. So we want to make sure things are done right by correcting that right-of-way. Now, once we exercised that property purchase, the county wanted to make sure that the city was going to build the project they said they were going to build. And if we weren't successful, that they would want to have that property back. So that's what you see is a second property option. This is from Skagit County to the city of Mount Vernon, and that they would have the option to purchase the property back from the city in 10 years if the city has not begun construction on their project. So now you can see, we're almost 13 years out into this agreement. And then that property option, if executed, would purchase the property back from the city for the original purchase price of $352,000. Here is a map of what we're talking about. You can see the outline of their property in red. It consists of a few different parcels during the negotiations and different realignments and correction of the right-of-way. You can see a small little triangle down toward the middle of your screen that we hadn't thought of before, but it is included in this particular property agreement. So that is a very simplistic version of what we're talking about. And so I'm going to go ahead and just stop the chair so I can see everybody. And are there questions around this particular agreement? For Kevin or Commissioner Browning is here too.
I think it's pretty straightforward. We've discussed this a number of times throughout the last several weeks. And I think it's kind of boiled down to the time to take action. And I know that the new resolution that came out had some language that would allow the mayor and the city attorney to negotiate the final details, which I'm completely in favor of. So if there's no questions, I'd move the adoption of Resolution 989.
Happy to second that. All right, so it's a motion by Mark and a second by Melissa. Just seeing if there is any other discussion. All right, seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed tonight, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Want to particularly thank also Commissioner Browning and Commissioner Janiky, who have worked really hard on this. And I think it really results in improved relationships and excitement between the county and the city to move forward on such a great infrastructure project. So we're really thrilled for that. So Commissioner Browning, thank you so much for your help on this.
You're welcome, and I really look forward to it. It was the rendering you have right now is fantastic. That'll just make our entry to our city off the freeway spectacular. I love it. So great.
Great. Thank you. All right, now that the property agreement is coming together, and of course, we will be making sure that the legal descriptions are exactly what we need. We have more things to talk about. So I've got some discussion around our next steps with the council. And so I'm going to go ahead and share my screen again and continue. Continue. Let's see. Let me know if you see that. Do you see that? Okay. And actually, I'm going to close that out and try it again since it opens up several different screens at one time. So. Sorry about that. All right. There. There. Can you see that now? Awesome. Thank you. Okay. So talking about our Library Commons Project, I wanted to point out to anyone who might be listening that the concept development report that I referenced just a little bit ago from April 17 of 2019 is on our city website. And so if you go on www.mountvernonewa.gov and just on the front page, scroll down, you can see a button that says the Library Community Center Project. If you click on that, it has a lot of information and links, including to this particular report. So any of the details we're talking through tonight, folks can take a look at. It's exciting. So I started this slide on where we left off and went back to April 30 of 2019 and crossed that out. And then went back to February 19 because we started talking about next steps right before the pandemic hit with our council. And then so we're kind of back now to today, to March 3. Super quick, just a brief background. In 2014, the city completed a needs assessment for our library project. In 2014 to 15, we engaged with the Mount Vernon School District about how could we do something jointly together? So we had a mixed-use project. And that unfortunately didn't work out. In 2017, the city engaged in the South Kincaid area, sub-area plan. And in that, the community started putting things on the maps and where things could go. And the idea that we could mix uses with a structure, parking structure plus a library, probably plus community center, other uses came about. So in 2017, we approached the county on a joint project, knowing they had some general facilities needs. And then at the county's request, they wanted to talk about including the senior center or community center as part of a project. We thought that was a great idea. In 2018, as I mentioned a couple of slides ago, we entered into an analocal agreement with Skagit County for cooperative provision of services. So to date, the city's invested about $129,000 in the project, doing pre-engineering, doing some site survey work, doing some archaeological work, some Phase 1 environmental work. We updated a needs assessment with the library use, and we also completed needs assessment with the senior center. We completed concept design, cost estimates, and an initial funding model, which as you all know is changes. Mentioned the Phase 1, the title, the archaeological work. We also applied for a state capital grant and were awarded $1 million for this project. And we started working on that property transfer with Skagit County. So next steps and are what we would do is enter into a next phase of a capital project, which would be A&E or Architecture, Design and Engineering, is what we kind of refer it to. And so I did just a very simple sort of flow on how the next steps would work. Clearly, on the left, we have the preliminary assessment that was done, our site control, which just happened, which is fantastic. And so the next phase is design and engineering prior to preparing a bid and going to construction. And as you can see, the entire time, we're working on the financial package of how we're going to pay for this. So design and engineering phase actually has a lot of state law around it. Office of Financial Management publishes guidelines and fee structures around this. And it's based on what your final estimated construction cost will be. They have three different scales. So depending on the complexity of the project is the percentage that is dedicated to design and engineering phase. In our case, that would be about 11%. So what this entails is the entire schematic design, not just how pretty it'll look, but the mechanical, the civil structural, all of that. Cost estimating goes into this. Part of the design and engineering phase is construction documents and bidding documents that are prepared, and so it does take quite a bit of time. We select a consultant to do this through a formal RFP, RFQ process, which means that we publish and we ask for folks that might be interested in working with us. There's interviews, there's scoring, there's contracts developed before that decision becomes formal. For our project, we would estimate that the design and engineering phase would cost $3.5 million over the scope of that design and engineering contract. And because of the complexity of the project, nine to 12 months for the design and engineering phase and then permitting. And so permitting can take a chunk of time. Staff were told me today, they're like, we don't want to guess on what that would be. Sometimes it depends on if you have federal funding and other things that you have to, you know, roll into that permitting process. But it would be a certain amount of time before decisions are made to actually go out to bid. So there's several decision points. And the timing of the payments of that $3.5 million, it's not all upfront. It's generally billed monthly as the contract moves through that entire phase. So it's kind of comes in chunks of money. What's so important about being in the design and engineering phase is that it's the next step to what's called readiness requirements when we have grant applications. So for instance, one of the current federal grants that we recently looked at was that the project must be in construction within 18 months of receiving that particular grant. So the idea that we're more moving toward a shovel-ready project is really important when we're going out and looking for funding for this. And so just to share with council, I wanted to give a quick example of how we did this before with our downtown flood protection project. That project started before my time, however. In 2009, we received funding and the city had done all the design and engineering and realized that they didn't have enough funding lined up to go to the full bid of the entire construction. So as you all know, we have three different phases. So when I took office, they had completed Phase 1, but we had lack of funding in Phase 2 and clearly Phase 3. So that's when you go out and you look for all the different sources that would apply to that particular project, which is what we took off and did. And of course, all these years later, it's a completed project. So just as an example, on the flood project, there were so many different types of funding that we were able to secure based on what that project did. Not only was it flood control for the downtown, but it was a public amenity. There were some parks funding that went into there. There was actually some hotel motel funding that went into there to build the public restroom. And so you can see there's a large mix of how that came to fruition. I-5 and College Way, that's actually a project that involved the federal highways. We were able to reappropriate a long-ago earmark to make that project a go. So you have federal transportation money, you have state transportation money, and you have Skagit County Economic Development Grant funding, as well as some local funds. And then the Riverside Bridge. The Riverside Bridge will be paid off next year. Doug's going to help me correct on that. But it was a Public Works Trust Fund loan that was paid for with city REIT funds. And so the Public Works Trust Fund is through the state with a very low interest rate to help localities like ours do infrastructure projects. During the course of the architect and engineering, the design and engineering, we come to different phases. So different percents of design is where big decisions are then come before city councils. So what I would like to do is engage in the full-meal deal, the project that entails everything that we want. And then as we come through design and engineering, and as we put together more financing, those decisions can change. Do we need to scale down the project? Are we doing okay? Are we looking for other funding? And so that's what I'm hoping that we could move forward on, is looking at really having everything that we originally wanted in the project. So funding scenarios to share with council is how are we going to get there? And so just like the flood protection project, we have a targeted dollar amount. We want to try and put together the funding sources, knowing that when we certainly aren't going to go out to bid unless we have the funding. And we want to set our sights on working for some of these. So I thought I'd go over some of this tonight. It's not a decision on how we're going to fund the project, but I'm sure council would want to know that we're in the realm of possibility if you're going to decide to spend money on the architect and engineering phase. So the first amount is the LTGO non-voted bond. And this comes from the ability through our LIFT award, which in all of our conversations that we've had in the past, council will know about. But for the general public, I'm going to advance this slide quickly. Where the LIFT award is from the state of Washington, it is basically a rebate of our sales tax back to the city in order for us to pay for infrastructure. In the original LIFT application, we specifically said we needed to use this funding for parking structure and as part of our downtown revitalization. And so if you look here, the LIFT award is $500,000 annually to the city, which is matched by the city currently through REIT. There is additional revenue that comes from our revenue development area in the form of just as the economy grows. This is something that your finance director, Doug, reports to the state every year on that. So if you take the revenue that we have, we could, as an annual bond payment of 1.185, that's how we back into calculating what we believe we could bond for for construction when the time comes of $20.9 million. And so I'm going to pause there to see if there's any questions about that and see if Doug wants to correct anything that I just said if I did it wrong. Doug, anything you want to add?
No corrections for me, Mayor. Everything you said was right. Except just as that note says there, the Riverside Bridge is paid off this year, in 2021.
Thank you very much. Okay. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and move on into other things that are on this list for council. So currently, we did activate our LIFT award two years ago. It's a 25-year award, and so we've been putting that money aside into its own specific fund, which currently has just a little over $2 million in that fund balance. So if we're going to use this LIFT award for construction, we're a few years out. So we're not ready to construct yet. So as we wait for that time that we would have a decision to bond for construction, we're still collecting. And so that's why you see an extra million there from the LIFT and a million from our REIT, because we don't think we're going to use a bond for a couple of years. So then there's just a little bit of extra REIT that we tucked away. There is a hospital parking facility fund that is a longtime agreement that is now effectively canceled. And so those funds could be moved into this funding scenario. We have the $1 million from the state commerce grant. We're going to be a little audacious and assume that the county may help us out with the County Economic Development Grant. We have applied for the last three years, but now we have site control. And I think the panel that recommends would be very supportive over the next few years. So we're hoping for that. The CDBG entitlement grant. So as the council knows, the city receives federal funding through CDBG. We used $1 million of that entitlement grant to help fund the flood project simply because it enables construction and infrastructure to happen. We are told that we're able to loan up to $1.6 million for this particular project that would be paid back either incrementally or in chunks, or depending on how council would like to do that. But that is an option in order to help pay for this infrastructure project. Same thing for our lodging tax revenue. We use that for the public restrooms. It's an eligible use to do capital improvements to cities. So we could use that as part of this scenario. I'm going to skip over the federal grant funding for a minute. $2 million is state funding. So the state recently, I believe last year or last fiscal year, set up a specifics capital grant program for libraries. It is capped at $2 million for each project, and we are hoping to apply for that as soon as the legislature adjourns this year and their state fiscal year begins in July. So we're hoping for that. And then our library foundation has generously pledged funding. It is more than $2 million in local fundraising that they have pledged. However, we want to be really conservative. And so we've added $2 million in local fundraising and hoping to rely on our foundation to help us with that. Back to the federal government. There is word coming directly from our senators and Congresswoman Del Benny's office that the Congress is going to be working on infrastructure funding after COVID relief is passed. There is also a significant amount of transportation grant and broadband grant funding that is already out on the street. And so we just feel that this is the time where opportunity will be for federal assistance on these programs and want to work with our delegation on any opportunities that come our way around that federal grant monies. So we believe that we can get to around $43 million to make this project a reality. Is there any questions so far on that? Okay.
Just for clarification, we need to have, in order to look at the federal grant money, we need to have this project at least underway. Is that correct? We've got to have the design and development and that kind of thing done before we can actually apply for that money.
Absolutely. They will want to know our project readiness. And if we're not in design and engineering, we're still in concept. And that really is never seemingly an eligible, an eligible position to be in. You're right. Yep. Okay. Covered the bond scenario. Again, this is not a decision at all in the next, you know, at least year and a half, if in a good scenario. But knowing that that's how we could be using that for construction. Infrastructure, the funding opportunity areas. This is kind of like I mentioned with our flood project and putting together opportunities because of the different components of the project itself. It is mixed use. It has a lot of opportunity for different things. So infrastructure grants that are coming from state and federal. Economic development grants, this is important one. I've been part of a lot of discussions around the Cascadia Innovation Corridor and how there's a lot of synergy between Seattle, Vancouver, B.C., and how there's so much more movement back and forth, whether it's life sciences or vaccine development currently. And so we really believe that along the I-5 corridor, we have some opportunities to capture economic development grants. Parking as transportation. And so I had some conversations with Washdott and Skagit Transit. This is a kitty corner to a transit station. And so there is funds that are coming out for not only transit-adjacent housing development, but transit-adjacent infrastructure. Interestingly enough, Washdott is selling off their park-and-rides because they don't have the funding to maintain them. And so the idea that our structure could be more of a long-term park-and-ride in the future to help Skagit Station and have that transportation encouraged is a real possibility. And so that could be a source of funding. Electronic vehicle charging and solar. There is funding that we believe is coming out around carbon reduction. And so if we have the ability to increase our electric vehicle charging in the downtown area by, I don't know, 1,000%, there's just, there's a few. Right now, it's Skagit Station. But that would be something we would go after grant funding to be able to pay for, as well as the solar energy to offset carbon. Library, I mentioned the state has their own specific library capital program. But the federal government has a bill that's working its way through the Senate that is Build America Libraries Act. And that is really following on the Carnegie libraries from a generation ago and being able to invest in libraries around our country. And that's again, been introduced in the Senate at this point. Broadband connectivity, I mentioned that there is already one of the largest funding packages for broadband through the federal government that is out right now. Community center and senior services. We really believe there can be funding there around equity and being able to serve these populations for free. As you know, public libraries are free. I don't think you can get more equitable than that. And everyone is welcome, everyone is served. And so that's a funding opportunity, as well as rural development. This council knows that we are a designated opportunity zone in a census tract. And so we believe that there could be investments around that. And as you know, we're going to keep our eyes open for any possible other funding that could come our way. So when we look at the idea that we could obtain funding, the more that we receive in our grants, the less burden there would be on any local funding, which I should point out, does not include any increase in property tax for our residents. So I want to make sure that's pretty clear. Currently, we have had very direct conversations with our senators' offices, including a formal written request that they asked us to apply for. The State Department of Commerce has a group that will, puts together capital funding opportunities. And they even have a program where when you have your project, they can invite you into a room with, you know, multiple funders and see what they can do to fit in funding into your project. So that's awesome. I mentioned the Consolidated Appropriations Act around broadband grant. That's the federal funding. The state legislative session will end in April. We're anticipating grants to be funded there, that potential library capital grant, and also some potential funding for infrastructure around carbon tax, if that comes to fruition. Actually testifying on a bill tomorrow morning from our local Senator Liz Lovlett around that. And then of course, that County .09 funding. We'll keep asking for support there from Skagit County. So I'm going to pause there and try and expand my screen because I can't see you all unless I do that. Any questions from council so far? Okay. So here comes the ask from myself and from staff. I would like to go ahead and move forward on that next step to move toward entering into our architecture, design and engineering phase. And as I mentioned before, it is a process. So we would need to publish requests for qualifications. We would put that out and allow it to be out on the street for, say, three weeks or so. What we would want to do after that is invite, not the whole group, but we would narrow down, hopefully we get a lot of people interested. And we would narrow that down to a smaller group to invite in-person interviews, which would be with a wide variety of folks, including council members. We would then want to select someone, work on that formal contract for a few weeks. And then it's council's decision. So we would be coming back to council for a decision to enter into a contract. Again, that work is months long. You know, that's nine to 12 months to finalize construction and bid documents if it all goes smoothly, and then into permitting. So definitely not saying we're ready to build right now, but our next steps would be entering into a contract for design and engineering. So that's what I would like to ask to discuss with you tonight.
So from my perspective, we've now gained site control. We can't move forward with any kind of grant funding or outside revenue unless we go into the design phase of it. So it only makes sense, if we want to move forward with this project, that we would take that next step. And then we can see where our funding may lie after we get that part of the phase done.
Yep.
I have to agree, obviously, with Mark on that one. We've been talking about this for a long time, as you documented very well. This is really exciting to see us at this point. So I am fully comfortable with moving forward as you've outlined.
Okay. I'm just going to chime in. And first off, I want to say thank you to Commissioner Browning for attending tonight and for Skagit County's support on this. I just see this as the catalyst for economic revitalization in the downtown corridor. And I'm just so excited. So I'm, you know, full steam ahead as far as this council member is concerned. Council may be wondering, and I probably didn't say it directly, but we do have the cash in order to do this. So just making sure that you knew that too. Okay.
Hey, Joe. Would you, you and I talked about the $10 million coming out of the federal government. The last time we did our flood wall, obviously, things were a little different.
Yes.
Right, because they couldn't earmark projects.
Correct.
Could you maybe just give a little quick synopsis what you told me about it, how that might have changed to where we could have a better shot at? Because I think we got, like, what, $900,000 for the Because I think we got like, what, nine hundred thousand dollars for the flood wall from the federal last time. And now, I mean, obviously it's going to be a pretty big ask on the ten million.
Right, sure. I will say, and I'll throw this out there, prior to the earmarks going away, we received an earmark from then Representative Rick Larson, who was our person in cell redistricting. And I think that was between six and nine, and of course, Esko probably not remember out of the top of his head. But so we have, we have precedent of receiving earmarks for projects within the city of, of a good size. That's what we were able to repurpose to make the College Way widening project go and fund that. We funded College Way and North Thirty if actually from that old earmark money as well. So it's not out of the realm that we haven't received earmarks. So, but you're right, when they went away, we, we didn't receive really hardly much federal funding for the flood project. And what the, what I'm told is that Congress recognizes that money kind of stopped flowing to projects when that happened. And that in the recovery coming out of the pandemic, would there be a limited use of earmarks directly for infrastructure projects? You know, around parameters that would be able to be then given to states directly and to projects directly. That's the conversation that I believe is going on with our federal delegation now. And so that's why we're hoping that some of that funding will come. Part of the reason why I think that's realistic is if you look at how the CARES funding was distributed, it's kind of giant blocks to states and then states went directly to the populations. And the current COVID relief bill goes directly to jurisdictions like the city of Mount Vernon with a specific dollar amount. So I think there's a lot of recognition that, you know, going, getting that money on the ground as quickly as possible for recovery is what our Congress would want to do. So we're really hopeful. If it's not a direct earmark though, there are these very, very realistic pots of funding to compete grant wise for, like the broadband money.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, I guess my turn. I think everybody knows that I'm pretty nervous about this step. It's an, it's an important step. I think staff's done a good job, you know, it's, it's a, it's a lot of money for the full build and we don't have everything identified yet how to do that. But until you get into the design process and start narrowing that down and then start raising revenues to meet that, it's hard to know if you're going to be successful. But we're talking about allocating as much as three and a half million dollars, you know, for a forty-five million dollar project. So I, I guess I was wondering how, how we're going to, if, if there's some way to kind of put milestones in place on the expenditure of the design money to where we can show that we're making progress on the revenue side of the house as well. So, you know, if there's a three and a half million dollar design process, could we, you know, get to thirty percent design? You know, see if, see if we develop some new strategic partnerships, see how we're doing with some of the federal funding opportunities. You know, get into the fifty percent design, et cetera, et cetera. So that we're, know that we're on the right track as we're going through this next year of design.
So are you saying, I, I'm trying to understand. So as we go, when we hire someone to do this work for us, there are absolutely all of those phases as they go through and as they do different presents of design. I do not believe that there would be any contractor in the world that would not accept a contract for full design. Is, are you saying that we would want to structure a contract that doesn't guarantee a contract for full design? I'm not sure.
Intingencies based on milestones to show performance for revenue development.
But yeah. I can, Esko can chime in, he turned on his camera.
Do you mind if I just mention that? You know, from my point of view on these kinds of things, hey, you know, the closer you get to having that whole design, I know there's a risk. I mean, like you have all said here, this is a project that the city is so committed to. So, you know, it's, it's kind of like, you know, you're going to come up with the money. It's just how long it takes you. But the closer you are to having a design, the better you are in a position to leverage it. I don't care whether it was the LaVenture Anderson project, the Widen Under College Way, the Floodwork project. The closer we got to say we're ready to rock, the more people want to give us, are willing to give us money. And opportunity comes your way. So this is a small, very important, yeah, I know it's a lot of money, but you know, relative to the project, it leverages a lot. And to just get it done, even if it's done, you know, and you don't have your funding, you're just in so much a better position. I'd, I'd go for it. That's my opinion.
Bill turned his camera on too, and he's our contracts guy. So maybe I could ask, you know, do we build contingencies into, I essentially get out of a contract, I guess. I'm not sure if that's what Richard's asking, so.
Yeah, well, you, you could do that, but you always have the option to terminate a contract if something isn't being productive for some reason. But you know, you are at the state, the state right now in order to go, you've already gotten the money that you can, that doesn't require you to have a full design. To go after those remaining dollars of that mosaic, that funding mosaic, you're going to have to have at least some portion of the design, if not showing you're making progress with all the different milestones for whether, I mean, you already made the milestone for right of way or property purchase. But you know, you're permitting and, and those activities are going to happen in concert with the design. It's, it's, it's a parallel process. And as you're able to start checking off those boxes that as being complete as intermediate processes, you're going to be able to leverage grant funding and applications for this project that will compete with the larger places like King County that already have shovel ready projects or are working towards that. You need to do that step in order to get to the next. Because we are competing with King County.
I don't know, Richard, does that speak to your question?
It does. I mean, I mean, it doesn't make me less nervous, you know, that we need to have a, a couple of things converging. You know, a design that verifies the costs and revenue generation that rises to meet that design cost. And when we get closer to that, I'll, I'll be more comfortable. I, if I'm the only one who's nervous about expending the three and a half million dollars, you know, I, all I could do is try to, try to help generate that revenue and send ideas. I've had some conversations with the mayor about how to do that, so I'll keep trying to do that. But it's, it's a lot of money.
Well, I understand Richard's concerns to a degree. And, and as we've had conversations before, right now we're looking at, at the full meal deal. The, the entire Commons Project Library, the, the whole thing. If we get down the road into our design and engineer and we see that we're not going to have the revenues, we're still going to have to build a parking garage. We've made that commitment years ago to the downtown community that we have to build that parking garage. And if we see revenues aren't going to be coming in as we've got kind of projected out here, we could make adjustments at that time. But in order to have any kind of, of case to be made to receive any kind of this grant funding, we have to be under the design and, and engineering's aspect of the project. So I think we have to move forward if we're going to look for any state or federal money. And two, isn't most of this, the design and engineer, that's, that's covered under our left?
Yeah.
Correct? So it's already funded or we're not going to have to borrow money to do that. That's, that's funded through our left.
Yes.
Right, but that money also has to pay for the eventual structure. So as, as long as the design part is utilized in the end, then, then it was necessary. If we have to shift gears in some way, then it may not have been and we'd have to recover that. But I appreciate the conversation, you know, I, I, I ask these questions and I appreciate the group dialogue about it, you know, that's, that's why we're a council.
If I may, typically our professional services agreements, which includes engineering and architecture, is structured in a manner where we can terminate at any time for convenience without cause. So while we usually put a scope of services for the end product, what they will bill us is actual time and expense working towards that end product. However, we can always, typical of the agreements, terminate for cause or seek changes and renegotiate as we go along.
Yeah, yeah, that's a definitely an important point. Yeah, you're not like you're, you bought the whole three and a half million dollars. You, you, if for some reason, yeah, you just, you just pay time and materials as far as you go. But still, the idea of just going all the way for the engineering is a good idea. And the architecture from my advice to you.
And we're committed to check in, you know, consistent, frequent check-ins on, on that progress. So we're apprised of all of that and tracking it as a, as a council.
Are you, are you asking if staff keeps track of that work?
I'm asking if the council will be able to have sort of monthly check-ins on that whole process.
Absolutely, council can call at any time for any, any check-ins at all, so. Melissa, I think you were trying to say something.
Yeah, I just, I did, I just wanted to chime in to say that three and a half million dollars is a lot of money. I absolutely, but I, I feel like, like Mary said, we have been working towards this for so long. And if we are not willing as, as council members to lean forward and, and invest in our community locally, I think it's challenging. If, if we're not going to invest, how can we attract developers into invest as well? And so that's, that's just as part of the decision that I'm making.
Okay. So I believe there is a majority of the council that is asking us to move forward. Clearly, we have to come back to council with a contract and all of that informal action. But we're ready to go out with a, a request for qualifications and move through a process in order to arrive at that, one hundred percent. You know, before we move on, I think, you know, as a community leader, as proudly leading the city through some very successful capital projects and having the backing of a council from before my time and moving forward, nothing is sure, but we owe it to our community to have a vision and to fulfill promises made in our master plan and to fulfill promises to community needs from 2014 where our community asked us to do this. And so this is how we do it. And I'm not any less than a thousand percent committed to the success and finding the funding of this project. And so it will be an exciting day when we can do some groundbreaking. And, and my staff is very well qualified and very experienced in bringing things over the finish line. So thank you, and I'm excited to move on. And then we'll be back in probably another seven weeks or so with a contract to move on. So thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. So. And we'll have Commissioner Browning with us the whole way, who will be celebrating with us as a county. If you think about it, council, this would be the largest economic development project in the history of Skagit County, done by a municipality, so pretty awesome. All right. Moving on then, we will go into item C, which is our public safety update. And our fire department has an update on their training overview. And our Assistant Chief Brian Harris is here, who's going to present this information. So go ahead.
Hello, thank you Mayor Ridro, greetings council, good evening. I'm going to share my screen with you here this evening. And can everybody see Mount Vernon Fire Department Training Overview? Wonderful. Great, I am Brian Harris. I'm your Assistant Chief of Operations for the city of Mount Vernon. I oversee training and EMS and Assist Chief Bryce with the operations of our fire department. And we'd like to present to you just a real short overview of our training and the organizations that govern our training, training requirements that we face in the fire department, how much time we spend and the importance of credentialing and certifying our personnel. Let me go over here and get to this next slide, whoops, one too far. Okay, so how does the fire department work and how do we determine what are the training standards for firefighters across the country? And that really starts out with an organization that's called National Fire Protection Association, otherwise known as the NFPA. As you can see on the slide there, they've been around since the late eighteen hundreds. They deliver more than three hundred code standards across the country. And these are training standards for firefighters, officers, driver operators, et cetera, along those lines. And it's the census standards may also be adopted by state and local authorities. And really what these census, census standards are is they set the minimum skills, knowledge and abilities required to perform a job. So that's all the way from a firefighter to a chief officer, those standards are there. Other organizations that have influence on our training, federal, we've got Occupational Safety and Health, Washington State Labor and Industries, Washington Administrative Code, we'll get more into the WAC there. And also Washington Department of Health, who oversees training requirements for paramedic and emergency medical technicians, which we have in our fire department. And also we'll get into a little bit of the Washington Survey and Rating Bureau and how they have influence on the fire department as well. And Skagit County EMS as a local agency in the county. They oversee plan and schedule the EMS training that we conduct in our department. Washington State has an administrative code under title two nine six. It is three oh five and it is the firefighter safety and stealth health standards. And really what that is, is it's a nice one hundred and eighty-page document that captures all of those federal agencies we just talked about into one long, lengthy, boring standard. And in that standard, it talks about the training that needs to be conducted in the fire department. But the WAC is really kind of vague in as far as the training that has to be conducted in essence of the amount of time that needs to be spent on it. And really what it talks about is this personnel be trained prior to performing their assigned duties. And really what that means is that if we hire a new employee, that we have to train them to be able to perform their duties before we put them on shift on a rig and expect them to provide emergency medical service or fire suppression activities, things of that nature. And they also say that training is going to occur at a regular interval to prevent skill degradation. Doesn't really say what that interval is in some instances, but it just has to occur on a regular basis. And it needs to provide detailed training requirements at, at various intervals. And some of those details, we're going to get into on what that really is. And so the WAC tells us the training that has to be conducted are along the lines of health and safety. And those are such things as noise and hearing loss prevention, respiratory equipment, employee right to know procedures, which covers the hazard communications, identification and handling of asbestos containing materials likely to be encountered during a fire response. As you know, we go into hazardous situations and some of those situations include buildings that contain asbestos, which are harmful to firefighters. We also have to require a train on workplace violence, bloodborne pathogens. Oddly enough, fire extinguisher training is one of those requirements for firefighters and lockout, tagout. On the fire suppression side of things, we have to be trained in building construction, hose tactics, various types of ventilation tactics, search and rescue, interior firefighting, residential, commercial and defensive firefighting. We also need to know how to put out vehicle fires and urban interface in the wildland. We live in an area where we have interfaced with our wildland in Skagit County and the city of Mount Vernon. We also are trained in salvage techniques, techniques, live fire training and wildfire training. On the incident management side, all of our personnel are trained through the incident command system, which is FEMA program for ICS one, two, seven and eight hundred. And the reason why we really need to have that is one, it's, it's a very basic level understanding of the ICS system. But in order for us to be eligible for grants from FEMA, our personnel have to be trained to a minimum of that level. This is one of those weird kind of requirements. On top of that, for our company officers and battalion chiefs, we also have to extend that out to a higher level of ICS three hundred and four hundred. On top of that, for our company officers and battalion chiefs, we also have to extend that out to a higher level of ICS three hundred and four hundred, which are more complex. Understanding of the incident command system and how they would need to perform in an emergency operation center fulfilling different functions. What we use in the city of Mount Vernon, our fire department is, is a training program called Blue Card Incident Management System Type Training. And really what that is, is it's we teach our company officers. How to manage type four, type five incidents and type four, type five incidents are ninety nine point five percent of the incidents that we run in the city of Mount Vernon. For example, that's going to be a house fire, a commercial building fire. A big mega commercial structure fire like Lowe's or Wal-Mart or something of that nature. That's what a type four, type five is. And Blue Card really is, it's a brand, if you will. But the reason I chose that for our fire department is when I became a battalion chief. Incidents were run three different ways. There's three shifts on the department. Everybody kind of ran it a little bit different. It wasn't the standard practice and it was my goal to standardize that in the fire department. We went with Blue Card and the reason for that is, is it's also requires a recertification. So it's not just a one and done. We have to maintain a certain number of CEUs, thirty six continuing education credits a year. It has over ninety hours of initial training. So. Our company officers and battalion chiefs are well trained in managing every day incidents that occur in the city of Mount Vernon. The WAC also talks about hazmat training. For our fire department, we train our firefighters to the operations level. They'll have to initially have an eight hour course in awareness. And operations is an initial twenty four hour class that they go through. And they have to conduct eight hours of hazmat training, refresher training annually. For battalion chiefs, we also require them to have hazardous materials incident commander. And basically what that is, it's an additional training on top of operations. And that we want our battalion chiefs to know and understand. What the WAC laws, OSHA laws and our LEPC plans. Are for implementing and managing hazardous materials incidents in our jurisdiction. So it's a little bit of a specialized training, but it's making sure that they understand. What the rules on engagement are, if you will, for managing and conducting hazardous materials incidents. The other things the WAC's talked about is technical rescue. Some of those are water rescue. We do our water rescue training. Well, water rescue is run by Skagit County Sheriff's Department. In our department, we train our firefighters to the level of shore based rescue. So it's more of an awareness. It's not an operations. We don't train our people to get in the water. And so we really just focused on the shore based rescue because that's what we have the equipment for and that's what our training level is too. We're also required to train in trench rescue, confined space, high angle and hazardous materials technician. Now, those are all things that if we have those programs within our department. We have to maintain a certain standard of training to be able to provide that level of service to the community. Of those, we don't provide any of those but shore based water rescue. Drivers training, the state requires that our firefighters are trained to be able to drive an emergency vehicle. We use the Washington State Fire Marshals Program. It's their emergency vehicle incident prevention program. And that is something that's put on by the state. We send our own personnel to become instructors. And that's all done internally within the Mount Vernon Fire Department. Every firefighter, paramedic in Mount Vernon, to include our officers. Which would exclude the battalion chiefs are all driver operators. In our department. And really what that means is they can drive a fire engine or the aerial apparatus and they can pump water. And that's really the difference. In some jurisdictions, that's a specialty. In our department, we require everybody to know and understand how to do that. So from day one. When they get back from the fire academy, we teach them how to drive apparatus safely and how to pump and work the aerial apparatus appropriately. Recruit training. The, the WAC requires that we have a recruit training process for our new employees. And so what we do in our department is we send our new employees to the Washington State Fire Academy. What that equates to is over three months of training, four hundred and ninety six hours of firefighter training. To the level of firefighter level two. And if we go back to those census standards that I talked about. From NFPA, there's NFPA firefighter one and firefighter two. And they even go on up a little bit farther. But in our department, we train everybody to firefighter level two. Which basically means. In addition to being able to mitigate fires inside a structure. This also certifies them to, to the level of vehicle fires and fires involving. Like LPG, low pressure gas fire. So we're talking about flammable liquids and we train them how to do that. And again, the recruit academy is three months of continuous training. So we'll hire them. They'll be here for a couple of weeks and then we send them away for three months to be trained and then they come back to us. And when they do come back to us, we provide that driver operator training and it's initial training. Again, it's the EVIP, the hydraulics. We teach them how water works in our pumps. Pump, pump pressures to pump at, all of those kinds of things. We go through all of our evolutions and pump evolutions. And really what that is, is they need to learn how to deploy hose for different type of fires, what kind of hose lays we have on our apparatus. And how we use those to suppress fire. Another big piece of that is aerial operations. We have a one point two million dollar piece of equipment with a hundred and five foot aerial. That's forty feet long. It's, and it's, it's expensive piece of taxpayer money running around out there. We want to make sure our people know how to operate on that appropriately. We also send our folks over to dispatch so they have an understanding of what occurs over there. It kind of helps provide that three sixty view of our firefighters understand. The kind of information that dispatchers are receiving and how they're pushing that out to us. It kind of helps create the mental picture of what's occurring. All of that put together is sixty three hours of training. And, and we have an annual reoccurring training that takes eight hours. To go through our emergency vehicle incident prevention program. On top of being just a firefighter, we also need to provide additional training to fire officers. Once a firefighter is commissioned to the rank of a company officer in the fire department, they have to have sixteen hours annually. Of training. That's not just basic firefighter training, but leadership, management, officer development, things of that nature. So that sixteen hours is, is in addition to all of the other things that they're doing. And it applies to all company officers and chief officers, officers within the operations group. So. It's not just the captains doing it. It's the battalion chiefs. It's myself. It's chief Bryce. We do all of those kinds of things. As far as the officer training is concerned. So separate from fire training, the Department of Health requires that our EMTs and our paramedics have EMS training. So all of that stuff that we talked about, that's all in the WAC. And now we're getting into the EMS side and this is specific to providing EMS to our citizens. So for EMTs and paramedics, that's regulated by the Department of Health, the State Department of Health, Washington. After they've received their initial training and they're certified, there's an ongoing training and evaluation program that's administered by Skagit County EMS. And that is a minimum of thirty hours of continuing education a year. For EMTs and our, our EMTs recertify every three years. And really what that works out to is EMTs perform approximately ten hours of OTEP training quarterly. In addition to that, we also have weekly training. Since we got into the ALS business as a, as a permanent full time thing for the city of Mount Vernon. We found that it's very valuable to coordinate training with our EMTs and our paramedics. So they're working together. It's really brought our, our level of patient care up for our EMTs. And it's really been fantastic in how cohesive they've worked together. And it really improves our efficiency out on the fire ground or EMS responses. The Department of Health requires our paramedics to have a minimum of a hundred and fifty hours of recertification training a year. So you can see it's quite a bit of a significant jump. And, and, and really what that's for is they're performing at a much higher level than an EMT. And that's why their hours are, are so much more. But paramedics also recertify every three years and maintain a certification in skills in advanced cardio life support. Pediatric, advanced pediatric life support, basic life support. If you look down there, the endotracheal tubes and the IV starts, there's thirty six and a hundred and eight. So they have to have thirty six live innovations. In a real patient or cadaver training. Some of those can be, a very small number can be. Like a rescue Randy training and an airway training dummy. But thirty six is a lot of innovations. For our paramedics to get. And that's each individual paramedic has to do that. And a hundred and eight IV starts. That's not too difficult, but it is quite a high number. So what we do in Mount Vernon is we try to focus our training on. The emergencies that we have a high frequency of. And. High frequency, high occurrence. That's what we're focusing on. And that's a driver operator training, Washington State EVIP program, basic firefighter skills and abilities. EMT and paramedic EMS training, ICS training, which is that incident command training that we talked about, auto extrication. But that all incorporates, you know, all of the skills of the firefighting and the building instruction, you putting all of that together. And this really, the focus training really dominates most of our time and we have some difficulty maintaining that at times. Usually because of call volume. We average about twenty calls a day for the city of Mount Vernon. And we have some schedule limitations with that because throughout our day. Responding to calls and training is not the only thing to do. We do. We send our firefighters out there that are conducting business inspections. We try to do as much pub as, pub as possible, although that has fallen by the wayside during COVID. But also training opportunities has fallen wayside because of COVID and. The limitations of being able to conduct hands on training with groups of other people. So those are some of the, the issues we run into with our focus training. But some of the advanced firefighting techniques that, that we should be getting to, but we don't because we just don't have the time. Or the budget. To maintain the skills that are required. To have these kinds of programs within the fire department. And those are things like technical rescue, rope rescue, confined space rescue. Water rescue, if we wanted to actually start sending people into the river to perform a rescue, that's a whole nother level kind of training. Hazmat incident commander. We're, we're getting this performed at the minimum level. And what I mean by that is, is that. We make sure that our battalion chiefs have it, but we have limited ability to send out our acting battalion chiefs or captains. To really start developing our personnel to be ready for those positions. Professional development. We have some difficulty getting people outside of Skagit County. A lot of professional development happens away from here. And going to conferences and schools. Those are the things I'm talking about with that. We're always able to send our personnel to fire officer schools to get fire officer one, fire officer two training. To prepare them for promotion. But this is more learning some of those. Existential soft skills of how are things going on outside of here? How are we using Excel spreadsheets to. Be more efficient in collecting data, things, some things kind of like that. Also administrative management skills. We don't have as many opportunity to send our folks out to. Gain some of that knowledge and skills. However, we'd like to say Aaron has done a really good job, our human resources director. Of sending us online classes through WCIA, which has been beneficial for us and we really appreciate that. Also advanced skills are not being attained or trained on regularly. And this is because we really have to spend so much time focused on the everyday thing. So we're missing out on opportunities. To advance our personnel and advance our department. So this kind of gets me into a little bit of WSRB. And remember I brought it up earlier, they're a, a different agency. That has a very vested interest in firefighting. And as far as our municipality is concerned. So WSRB is a Washington Survey and Rating Bureau. They're approved by the Washington State Office of the Insurance Commissioner and they're a nonprofit organization that evaluates a community's fire defense capabilities. And so the, how they do that is. Or how they rate a municipality is the community is assigned a protection class number, which in turn influences. Resident and business owners' fire insurance premiums. The lower the number, the better the rating on a scale of one to ten. Our current rating is a class four. We've moved up to a class four from a class five after our last rating. In the state of Washington, we are one of seventy six cities with a rating of four. And most cities are between five and seven. So we're a little bit better off than the majority. A portion of their evaluation process is directly tied to fire related training. And when I say fire related training, when WSRB comes and does an evaluation on our, on our fire training, it does not include EMS training. Or administrative training gets pushed down from human resources department. It doesn't include Department of Ecology training that they send us to make sure we're not flushing bad stuff down the drains. It's, it has to be specifically related to fire service. Which is kind of unfortunate because we spend a lot of time doing those other trainings. So what that training is, or what they're evaluating is supervision, company training. Training center training. When I say training center, what I'm talking about is the training tower at the Skagit Valley College. That is a, quantifies as a training center. And they want to know how much time we're training in the day, how much time we're training in the night and how many times we're doing multi company operations. And multi company operations refers to a company. And what a company is, is people that are assigned to either an engine or a ladder or a med unit. So one of those makes up a company and they want to make sure we're spending time training together. And they also want to make sure that we're spending time training with other agencies. An example of that would be with Burlington's Fire Department. We have an automatic aid agreement with their fire department. And so we're required to train with them at least at a minimum quarterly. This year we started training with them monthly. So we're getting more repetitions with, with their fire department, which has been beneficial as well. We also have to provide officer training, driver operator training, operator training and recruit training. And so how WSRB breaks that down. Is company training applies to all operations personnel. And it just kind of ties into what I'm going to wrap it up with is the importance of certifying our personnel. As firefighters and company officers. And so when WSRB comes in, they look to see how, they look to see if our, our personnel are certified. To IFSAQ, which is the International Fire Service Accreditation Council or, or Pro Board. And really what those are is they're third party agencies. That will come in and they'll test your personnel to say, yep, they meet the minimum standard of NFPA. And then they give you a certification that says you've met that standard. Because the WAC doesn't require us to certify personnel. They just require us to train personnel. But the benefit of certifying our personnel will relate directly back to WSRB. Because what they want to look at is, do you have certified personnel? And if they are. A firefighter one has to conduct a hundred and eighty hours of fire related training annually. For a fire department to get a hundred percent credit for their training. If they're not certified to firefighter one, they have to do two hundred and forty hours of annual training. In contrast, if they're certified to firefighter two, it's only a hundred and twenty hours of training. Does that, does that make sense? With everybody? So that's why we want to certify our people. If we want to get the maximum rating we can from WSRB and if that's important to council and our community. This is the amount of time we got, we got to get our people certified to firefighter two. And we got to train a hundred and twenty hours annually on fire service related training. This goes over to the facility training. So they want us to do a minimum of twenty four hours of training annually at a fire trading facility. Again, that would be at the Skagit Valley College Training Tower. Six of those hours must occur at night. Twelve of those hours must be a multi company operation and the other six would need to be in, in the daytime. For supervision of the training. So this kind of gets more into my realm, but personnel in charge of training sessions must be certified as fire instructors. Again, they're going back to that IFSAQ certification. We have. We are very fortunate to have a large number of our fire suppression personnel certified to the instructor level. So we don't have any problem there. And training must be under the guidance of qualified. And training must be under the guidance of qualified training officer. That's me. I'm the qualified training officer. So I have the minimum of ten years ICS experience on the rank of captain and higher, and we've got the instructor two covered. So that's good. And so again, going back to the importance of certifying our personnel, it validates our personnel are trained to the census standards, which is important. And it recognize, it's recognized by the state of Washington, also by WSRB. And it reduces the amount of required training time that we have to perform. And it maximizes our point valuation for our next WSRB rating period. And that is the training in a nutshell. And I know I blew right through that because I know you're all just ecstatic about our training. But if you have any questions, I am, hopefully I can answer them for you.
All right. Brian's here to answer any questions. Any questions from council?
I just want to say it was really interesting, Brian. I did enjoy watching that. So thank you.
You're welcome. I'm a fast talker.
I think sometimes people have, you know, opinions that, oh, they, you know, city staff. This is going to sound terrible, that they just kind of hang out and whatever. But with Brian and firefighters and the qualifications, the, the training that happens there is just an example. Police is another department or engineering staff. So it's nice to see and be able to share how much training they do and save money for fire insurance rates.
Yeah, our number one priority is to be ready to send our people out to respond to emergencies in our jurisdiction. Responding to calls is the number one priority and training is the number two. And the community doesn't really see how much training we do.
Can I ask a question? You, you told us what the sort of goal is, what you're striving to get to, and you described the, the training that's happening now. I, I didn't quite catch. Are you, is, are we not quite there? We need to do more than we're currently doing. And that's the sort of the work in progress part.
Yeah. So I think if I understand your comment, question there correctly, Council Brock Smith, is that yes, we haven't been hitting it enough. So what I have done is not going to, I won't pull it up for you now, but if you're interested, I can show you how we track and record all of our training for personnel. So not too long ago, we purchased a software program called Target Solutions. And it's a software system where it comes with custom content in there or training content that's already there, but it also allows us the ability to build custom content. So it's a really good resource that we have to deliver computer-based training and also record all of that training that's being conducted online and that's occurring out in the field. So identifying that, hey, we're not doing a really good job recording our training. We're doing a lot of it, but we haven't recorded very, very well. I set up a system in Target Solutions that will track each person in our department based on their certification level and how many hours they're doing annually. And then what category that, that training is occurring in. So we have a lot better system of doing that, but we're really going to find out at the end of this year how close we are to meeting those requirements for WSRB. And, but aside from that, because we spend so much time trying to hit the basics, we're not spending time, I would say, exploring new possibilities to provide more service to the community, if that makes sense. So, and, and the, and the big reason for that is, is if, for instance, if we decide that we say the fire department wants to do, we're going to get into swift water rescue because we have a river running through our jurisdiction, and we think that's important. That's a whole nother level of training that needs to occur for our fire service. So one, we got to be vested in the program, committed to paying for the training and purchasing the equipment, which again, just take, it's just, it's more time, it's more money, and we got to make sure we have the personnel available to be able to do that.
Okay. Any other questions for Brian about the training? Okay, we have, oh, sure. Go ahead, one.
Sorry. Mr. Harris, you mentioned here that the time is an issue and, and funding wasn't an issue in terms of getting up to speed on training, right?
Yeah, in some aspects, yes.
Okay. And so how is, how is that the department is being squeezed for time? And so i- if we know how the department is being squeezed, how can we, you know, unsqueeze it to make sure that the time is available to get that training up to speed?
So that's a really good question, Council Morales. And really, so firefighters work a twenty-four hour shift from eight AM one day to eight AM the next day. And so really, it's really difficult to create more time because we really can't do it in that context. So what we really focus on is having our battalion chiefs and company officers manage their time well. And even as efficient, efficient at it as they are, we still have, and what I didn't present is that when our crews come on duty, they come in every day and they have to perform daily apparatus checks. They got to make sure their self-contained breathing apparatus is working and functioning. And then when they're done with that, they're, they're checking their email, they're doing computer-based training. And between all of that, they're responding to emergency calls. And then we still have requirements in that we need to provide business inspections to our community. So it is, as far as providing more time, it might really come down to that eventually we may have to hire back more personnel on a shift so we can provide the space for the people to do the training. When I say space, I mean the time to do it. But that's something that we'll have to look more into to see if, if that would solve the problem.
I see. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. All right. Next up is miscellaneous updates. So either Chief Harris or Chief Camick. Just under public safety, anything else to share from fire or police?
I will say on the fire side that we do have a structure that has been donated to the fire department. It's on the corner of Thirtyth and College Way. We are in the process of evaluating the feasibility of using that structure for some live fire training. And in the event that that works out, we'll be coming to council. We might need to close down the lane on North Thirtyth and College Way westbound, but we'll let you know. There'll be more to come on that when we get closer.
Okay. All right. Chief Camick, I know you were going to be part of the College Way Speed Discussion. Any other quick updates from PD to share?
Nope, nothing here, Mayor.
Great. All right. We'll move in for the good of the order. So our College Way Speed Discussion follow-up.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm just going to try to share my screen here. So council had asked some time back about College Way specifically, State Route five thirty-eight, as far as speed, speed limits, how that process would work as far as if they wanted to make changes to that. Excuse me, I apologize. And also Bill Bullock's here and ESCO are here too, and they're very, they're probably more familiar with Washington State Department of Transportation than I am. So I'm going to encourage them to chime in as they need to, but I just wanted to give you kind of an overview in regards to your question. I think first and foremost to understand is, is that five thirty-eight is a state-controlled roadway. So any decisions or choices to make changes to that roadway around the state of Washington, not on the city of Mount Vernon. It is a five lane. It's the largest major commute arterial through the city. And then, as you can see there, when we did a, a speed radar project, we count car trips. And just in that, this ten-day time period, you know, almost seventy-four thousand one-way trips were on that road. So there's a lot of vehicles that travel that pathway. It's a graduated speed zone, so it starts at twenty-five, it grows to thirty-five, and then forty-five miles an hour as it leaves the, the city. And I'll, I'll show you that on a, a map. The Department of Transportation has looked at speeds and evaluated reducing speeds in the, in the past. And that's specifically been a, a request from the city to look at that in two thousand and twelve. And then again, re-studied again in eighteen, and I'll, I'll give you a little bit more detail here in the next slide. This just gives you an overview of, of kind of where those speed zones are. So as you leave Interstate five and you start heading east towards Riverside, it's a twenty-five mile an hour speed zone there. It then increases to thirty-five miles an hour out to about North Thirty-Fifth Street area there. And then it increases to forty-five miles an hour as it works its way out into the county, out of the city limits. Speed measuring has been done in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and eighteen by the Department of Transportation. And then in December twenty twenty, we put our, our radar trailer out there that also does a speed measurement. I would just comment that probably the DOT speeds were probably a little bit more accurate, just because they use invisible counters to do it, the road tubes. Whereas we had the speed reader board out as well. So sometimes that can affect driver behavior. So in two thousand and twelve, the, the city asked the Department of Transportation to actually reduce speeds, speed zones in certain areas. And so this is just kind of give you a highlight of where that was, what the findings were, and what their decision was. So on College Way, up to the railroad crossing, they asked if reduce it from thirty-five miles an hour to twenty-five miles an hour. And the state looked at that and denied that request. And part of what went into that was eighty-five percent of the vehicles were traveling at thirty-six miles an hour when they measured it. They looked at collision data and speed was not a contributing factor to it. And then they looked at the, the mitigation for safety around there, like sidewalks and crossing signals and pedestrian crossing areas, and they found it to be very adequate for safety. City asked the speed zone of forty-five miles an hour from North Thirtyth to law to be reduced to thirty-five. The state's conclusion there was very similar in their denial. They found that eighty-five percent of the vehicles were, you know, forty-seven to forty-eight going eastbound, forty-five to fifty, coming westbound. And then from two thousand and six to two thousand and ten, only two collisions were found to have speed as a contributing factor. And they also looked at roadway design, how wide it was, straight and flat for visibility, driver safety and conditions in their decision. When it reached out to the Monty Vista area of College Way, which would be just out short of the city limits, they asked, they did approve reducing the speed zone from fifty to forty-five. You'll notice though that the, you know, the speeds were still within the, the eighty-five percentile range of forty-five. But the factors they took into account there were the, the horizontal roadway structure that goes on through there. But more importantly was the Skagit Highlands housing development that was going on just up on the hill to the east. And so even though there was no collisions involved there, that speed was a factor. They felt that the design of that area and the contributing factor of housing development was justified. So they did accommodate that reduction and reduce the speed. They remeasured again in two thousand and eighteen, and again, looking at that section of roadway out there, eighty, the eighty-fifth, I'm sorry, the eighty-fifth percentile was thirty-five to forty-five miles an hour. And then on the westbound side, thirty-seven to forty-six. So there wasn't a desire on their part to make any additional adjustments. And then what we found when we put our radar trailer out for the ten days in December of twenty twenty, that eighty percent of the vehicles on that section that we had were traveling under forty miles an hour. And, and I don't want to represent here that we, we don't have vehicles that do travel over that speed. We do. But they're looking at the, you know, that majority factor in some of their decisions. Just taking a look at accident history in that area, and it's predominantly heaviest at the intersection of College Way and North Thirtyth, where you have vehicles turning in and out. There was, in two thousand and nineteen, there was seven motor vehicle accidents there. And one where a bicycle, bicyclist was struck. None of these collisions involved speed. All of them were a, a turning-related accident or failure to yield. And then in twenty twenty, there were eight motor vehicle accidents, one involved backing out of a driveway. And again, all were surrounding more of a, a left turn or another driver failing to yield the turning of that vehicle that was there. And then on November sixteenth, twenty twenty, of course, we had the pedestrian hit-and-run accident. And I know that's the impetus for asking about this. And I just wanted to reiterate in that accident investigation, speed was not a determining factor that caused that accident. It was the hit-and-run driver was making a left turn from College Way on the North Thirty-Fifth when the pedestrian was crossing and that accident occurred. So consistent with some of the other things that were there, still tragic by all accounts. So. Anyway, ESCO, I don't know if you or Bill have anything that you would like to add?
ESCO, you're muted.
Whoops, I went the wrong way and toggled myself off. Sorry, Chief, I just mentioned that the statistics at Thirtyth were certainly tough, and that's one of the reasons why we had the warrants to do that signal. So I hope that's going to be getting a lot better on accidents at that location. In terms of speed, I just add that, you know, DOT and this kind of a situation is going to be especially rigorous about methodology, about how they determine speeds and, and they're going to, they're going to be really strict about eighty-fifth percentiles and and that sort of thing, as they should be. And, and, and so, you know, it just, if it doesn't fit the data out there on the, when we asked for that to be done, you notice especially, we came down on those eighty-fifth percentiles out there was a fifty-five, fifty mile an hour speed limit. Well, it was actually, we were actually people driving forty-five in the eighty-fifth percentile. So that right there made it a lot easier to get them to go along with that. But my point is they're going to be very strict on this kind of stuff and follow the science such as it is. And, and there's a lot of science that says, you know, you don't want to, you don't necessarily reduce speeds or reduce accidents by posting speeds lower than what the traffic wants to travel. Not outliers, but the, the general mass of the driving population as measured by the eighty-fifth percentile. Anyway, that's, that's my small comment there.
Any questions from council? It was simply a follow-up agenda item request. So I wanted to make sure we answered all the questions.
Yeah, I, I, I'd like to keep things the way they are. It just seems like the more frustration you have south of the, the venture cross there too. I mean, it's already starting to back up, and then people start running the yellow lights because they're tired of waiting. I think you just got to keep traffic moving. And like I've said before, you can't fix stupid. I mean, there's, there's some people that will just not follow the law. And, you know, a little speed and, but I, I think our, what you guys have done and looking at it, it's, you know, people are staying within the, the parameters of the speed limit. So I, I'm glad to hear that.
Okay. Thanks, Gary. All right.
Yeah, I appreciate the follow-up on that for sure. It's good to see how, how that's working. It seems like there's more development out there. And so maybe it could become more of a problem as more people are using the roadway, but we've also improved it in some ways with like the street signal. So sure appreciate the, the data-driven exercise and the history. I didn't know how much had been done there already.
Okay. All right, great. If there are any questions for that? All right, we're still under for the good of the order. I think Councilmember Beaton- I think Councilmember Beaton had something.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I am asking Council to reconsider or to consider returning to council chambers targeting March 24th. The city has received thousands of dollars in CARES funding for PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, complying with all Department of Health and Skagit County Public Health Personal Protective Protocols. Our city employees are working. Services have not missed a beat. Our schools are returning to classroom, as is, as are their teachers. Most of council, if not all of us, are working outside of the home at some level. I have been entrusted to lead the Skagit County Clerk's Office. We provide critical, essential functions for Superior Court. We have, that lobby has been open since May 4th. Protocols, protective protocols are working. With the county moving into the next phase, I believe we are able to return safely. As leaders in this city, I believe we have a responsibility to model the way, trusting the science and professional guidance. I understand we have to wear masks and I understand it's no fun. I have glasses too, and they fog up and I can't see three feet beyond the end of my nose. And so I get it, it's frustrating. But with more and more vaccines becoming available, city staff has worked diligently to ensure that we can return to council chambers safely. So at this time, I am just asking respectfully that we reconsider that decision. Thanks.
Thoughts, anyone?
I'm with you 100%, Moza. I, I'm ready. I think we should be back in, in session in chambers. We have the things set up. You're right, we have things set up. The staff has done great work and we, we will be, we need to set an example. You're absolutely right.
Thank you, Mary. All right, no one else disagrees with me? Well, this is great news.
I think it would be good for the public to, to see council back in chambers and be able to participate in council activities like the days of old, where they could actually come in and give public testimony. They could address the council with, with the comments and things. So it's about time that we get back into session.
Thank you, Mark, for reconsidering. I do appreciate it.
All right, Jill, are we set up as far as the community? I mean, if we had a huge issue and there was a ton of people that showed up on a big issue, would we be ready for that?
We have, staff have worked out, you know, there is certain percentage limitations in the courtroom. So only, I think, 20, I think it's like 24 people can be in there. We would, every week we'd have to set up the multipurpose room as an overflow room in order to be able to accommodate any public that would come. So it depends on how big and how many people. So, but we could do it. One of the questions I would ask is, would we like to keep our agendas just for maybe another month or so to that second and fourth Wednesdays in person? Maybe through the month of April to get kind of vaccinations wider instead of sort of an every-week agenda? Those are just some thoughts to add into the conversation too.
So if we're gonna meet back in chambers, I'd like to go back to our, our original committee meetings at 6 o'clock. Our council meetings at 7 o'clock. A lot of work gets done during that 6 to 7 o'clock hour. And a lot of questions are asked and answered from staff. And I think that, that that flow of communication is, is better during that 6 to 7 hour versus being on Zoom and having it all kind of compiled into, into a council meeting. So if we wanted to have a committee meeting, pick the committees and do them every other week, that's fine. But I think I, for me, I'd like to go back to the old committee style, 6 to, 6 to 7 hour council meetings from 7 on.
Any objections to that? Okay. How about this then? We will look at doing two meetings a month, going back to the style of 6 to 7 as committee. We'll maybe compress our committees so that for, at least for maybe March and April, we'll meet twice in the month and then have it all like a compressed committee instead of having every Wednesday. And that way, you know, I would think by the end of April, most council members should have the ability to get a vaccine and maybe feel that much more comfortable as well as staff members who are staffing the meetings as well. Does that, does that sound like a plan? Do that? Okay.
Briefly. Go ahead, one. I just want to thank Councilmember Beaton for bringing this issue up again. So thank you. You're asking us to reconsider. Reconsidering it currently in my head, I think it's only gonna be a matter of time before we go back into person. I've never stepped foot into those chambers, so it's gonna be a new experience for me. So I'm actually quite eager. But also I do want to set an example and want to do it the right way. So I don't know if March 24th will be the ideal date to do that. If it is, fine. If it's not, then we should reconsider and looking at a different date when it's safer to do so. I think, I believe I saw today that the B117 variant was detected in Skagit County. So I'm not sure if that will complicate things around the area. But it's also something that I've been considering now that I have a heads up on that. So, thank you.
What I think we could do is we can go ahead and plan on the 24th. Could always change if something happens. And then council members, maybe we could set up a time for you to visit the council chambers prior to that 24th date so that you can see the layout. You can be comfortable with the flow of the meeting because it will be a little different. We will be spacing and so we'll invite you to come in so that you're comfortable for the, for the 24th and going back in. So that might be able to help too.
May I say something?
Yeah, go ahead, Iris.
I don't have any, I don't have any problem to go back in person. The thing for me, it worries me a little bit is when the meetings are a little bit long. Be three hours or more than hours in one space. That just gets me concerned. Because even when we go out, we work out in and out, in and out. In my specific case, I never spend more than 20 minutes in one side. And I am really concerned if I have to be in a closed space more than two hours. That's the thing, it concerns me. If we don't have, if we don't move in another phase with this pandemic, this is, that's my only concern. I don't have any problem to meet in person, but sometimes those meetings get longer until 9 o'clock or past 9 o'clock.
So I think one of the things we can do to, to address Iris's concern is those meetings that go long. Usually we have some presentations either by eDAS or, or name the organization. They come in, they give a presentation, and we have a lot of different discussion in that regard. So maybe on those meetings where we're meeting in public, we try to stick as closely to, to city businesses as possible and get the, wait for the outside information, the updates and things for a time when, when it's a little bit better. Keep the meetings a little bit shorter is all.
Sounds like, sounds like a good.
Yeah, it sounds a plan when we have a, yeah, absolutely, I agree with that.
Okay. And also Iris, I'll have, I can have Chris review with you. The ventilations systems, what we had done in City Hall specifically is we upgraded to HEPA filters that are literally hospital-like surgery grade. So I can ask him to explain with you and talk with you about the airflow and how, how we kind of keep, in one room, we keep that going. So offline, maybe when you come visit the space before the, we go back, we can talk through that with you as well, so, so that you feel a little bit more comfortable.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. So I think we have a target then. We'll work toward that. Okay. That's all I have for, I don't have anything else to share, any other for the good of the order. Okay, thank you. With that, we've finished our agenda items. Again, thanks to Commissioner Browning who stayed the whole time and learned a lot about our city, I'm sure. We appreciate that.
Good, thank you very much.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you, Peter, for coming and staying. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Mary.
All right, so good night, everyone. We'll see you on.
See you.
See you later.
Bye-bye.